We're ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, six thirty. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call our Scottsburg public council meeting to order on this May the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, in the year of our Lord. The first thing we do is have prayer, so if you don't mind, let's rise if you can. We'll have a order of prayer and then the pledge of allegiance. Father, we come before you this evening, thanking for the day of life you've given unto us, Father, as a joy to spend this day in this pilgrimage of life, Father, and laughing and enjoying the day, enjoying the coolest, Father, the time that we might think is worn. So, Father, we just never know what you bring unto us, we're thanking. Your word says, "In all things give thanks," so this is the will of God concerning you. Father, we thank you for Scottsburg, Indiana, we thank you for the people here. We thank you, Father, for those who have made this their home. And those who travel through, Father, be delighted with this community. Father, we pray for your presence here. Father, we pray for the pride of the people living here. So, Father, we pray for protection, for help, we pray for the sermon form for those of us who have been elected to represent the people. And pray for understanding, Father, wisdom. While they seem to be asking Jesus' name, pray.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next thing is our whole call by the clerk treasurer, Jan Ward.
Mayor Amy?
Here.
Chris Albertson?
Here.
Bill Hublin?
Here.
Rick Mans?
Here.
Christian Evans?
Here.
Chuck Ruff?
Here.
Thank you very much. The next thing is the approval of the minutes for the May ninth meeting. So, we will accept the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is her second.
I'll say.
Chris Albertson, second set. Any comments, questions about the minutes? Bring them on, please, say aye.
Aye.
That was good, Evans, so thank you very much. The next thing is our public comment sector of our public council. The Scottsburg City Council accepts public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council, we ask them to come forward and state their names for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Is there anyone here who would like to come forward tonight? Yes, please.
I would just like to thank the council. We had our Walmart Harbor event last, I guess, a little week ago Saturday. So, I just wanted to thank y'all for supporting that, everything, come out great. Had new weather and made young men of the community very happy. So, I just wanted to thank y'all's support for that, if you can.
Thanks, Kevin.
What was your thing again, Kevin?
Noah Lloyd, or actually Dr. Magic Grace. Yeah, we were everywhere, we got his swing set, got it set up, he was delighted, so.
Thank you for all you do.
It was a pleasure.
These kids are blessed. They're the ones who are going to come up and take care of us, so. It's a training, a teaching, so good job. Anything else? If nothing else, we'll close our public comment on the new business. Orders twenty-two dash seven, and amended orders, adding section eighty-six dash thirteen to chapter eighty-six of article one, the city code by establishing a new speed limit on certain streets located within the city. This came up last meeting, and this was specifically on Lake Road. Lake Road being out, I guess it's, I don't want to guess west of, but I think it's just Lake Road there by the Casey's round, Highway thirty-one, where it goes down to the overpass, then down to that different intersection. So, they all kind of come in there. And in going here, we found out that there was a smaller thirty mile per hour sign if you're going east. So, if you're coming from and going across the interstate, it's kind of more in front of Jack than it is south.
Well, it's actually right across the entrance from the apartments there. I went right in the middle today, and I had no choice, but I drove out there, sure enough, it's open.
Well, and there's nothing on the, if you're going west.
Right.
So, I had asked our chief of police, the one and only Scottzellis, and to have an officer out there. So, you had Brian Hall out there. And Brian said we have multiple folks, fifty miles an hour. He's pulled over, half dozen of them. Give a warning because we don't have a sign there. The one sign looks like, we didn't see, we did not see anything in any ordinance. So, I don't mean to say, should put a sign up there for thirty miles an hour? And Brian said, I remember that there was a sign west, it's kind of on that property there, the town there. So, it looks like to me, if we just went past that parking lot in that grassy area, that might be the place to put it. Another sign, if you so choose. And Brian suggested that we take the thirty mile hour sign, not across from the Yon's apartments, but more closer to the interstate. So, as soon as you come across that, that bridge, as it were, from the interstate coming into Scottsburg, he said that's kind of where we, he thought we were going to finish that. So, but he did say a place about it.
Didn't we pass the first reading of that?
I think we did.
And amended to thirty miles an hour? And then we were going to speak with the county about going all the way to the four-way? Did that, did that, my memory? Did anybody get a hold of the county?
Chief?
Once again, my voice is bad. I talked to John, and he, you'll have to speak to him to get it straight, but he said a lot back. They amended a lot of their stuff, and a lot of it's forty-five now, or slower. So, they've already, the county has addressed that being fifty-five, is what I told him, I'm not sure if they're there or not. But he told me that.
You understand, straight?
I'm not saying it's not true. Again, legally, if a sign is not posted, it's what state law is. So, it's fifty-five there unless there's a forty-five or hundred speed limit sign passed the other way.
That's what, that's what he told me. So, somebody up there might want to speak to it. And I know John's done some stuff there because that funny stop you talk about, within the last few years, they made that a four-way stop. Now, someone that lives right there, nobody gets a four-way stop there, but it's posted four-way stop now.
Chief has been taking singing lessons, so. I'll be having a basketball season, I'm just trying to get this guy here.
Maybe he'll give the money back.
Well, Kim, my thought is we go ahead and do what we can do for the city, don't you think? This is your area.
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, to your point, we all talked initially at thirty-five, and then I think we were all degrees to drop down even further to thirty, so to have that sign out there, it ought to be at thirty. That makes things easier on our end as far as making that city move forward, in my opinion. And so, I don't care, reach out to John also, talk with him.
So, where, thirty miles down to the northern west from fifty-six to where? Where does, where's the overpass? To the overpass or on the other side of the overpass? Because I think right now it's posted thirty-five on the overpass.
The other side of the overpass, we have no jurisdiction.
Oh, okay. That's why I thought if we decided thirty, we could work with the county, they would adopt that thirty as well. We would split the cost of postage, or whatever that looks like.
So, let's go ahead and pass. I mean, I don't know how you all feel.
But the only, I do have to point out real quick, and I know Josh is here, and this might just be on my copy, on this third whereas, it states that it is in the message of traffic code public safety for the speed limit to be established at thirty-five. And then it goes down further to state third. So, I think it's just a, I just want to make sure that that's accounted for one more. Because I remember us deciding on thirty, but it states two different things, man.
I'll get that through. He actually amended it while he was sitting in the last meeting.
Yeah. I didn't know, which is my copy, I'm sure he copied mine too, but I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
So, I think what we passed?
It was for thirty.
It was for thirty.
It was for thirty. So, we just need a motion for the second motion.
So, Chris Albertson, you want to make that?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Chris Albertson makes the motion for a second.
I'll say.
Rick Mans? Second's that, so any questions, comments? Bring them on, please, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that sounds genuine. Bill, you said ye two, right? Bill Hublin, you said yes, so I didn't hear.
I heard me.
So, okay, so do you want to go forward or do you want to wait for the next one?
I'd like, go ahead, Chris, go.
Go ahead and get that binned at first?
Well, I was just going to say, continue dialogue with the county. If we could reach out to them, and then maybe by the time we pass the third reading, we'll have a little bit better understanding what that partnership looks like.
And people watching right now, hopefully we could have this done by the beginning of June.
Yeah, sure.
But we don't have a meeting until, what, June eighth or September thirteenth?
So, Jill, let's reach out to them, can't let them know what the city's going to do. Said they want to join with us on that. And, you know, here regardless, we'll, you know, we have probably a hundred, a hundred and thirty signs over there. That replaced a lot of signs, so we'll have those speed limit signs. The speed limit signs will probably be larger than the one that's out there now.
But we can't post that.
Till it's passed.
Correct, but we can't post that on the county's jurisdiction, right?
No.
So, we would have to get their permission or have them do it once or two, right?
If that's what they want, so choose. But what you guys are doing is choosing the city of Scottsburg.
Correct.
And you're saying, okay, because basically all the population is on the east side of there. There's, there's a population over there, but you think without a larger portion of population?
And if, you know, just, I'm just speaking for myself. If the county doesn't want to go down to thirty, that's not going to stop us from doing it. I mean, I don't know.
On the first portion?
Yeah, on our portion, we have no control past the, past the interstate, so.
So, Jill, our office will reach out to the county just to let them know, we don't know what they will do, so. Okay, anything else on that?
We leave.
Okay. Next thing we have is a, is one of this, twenty-two dash nine, a plant unit development ordinance, admitting this zoning ordinance of the city of Scottsburg. And this is now Ms. Carolyn Bolling.
So, object B and E, I heard, are actually the same thing, so I'm cutting your agenda in half a little bit. But so, recently you all approved six ninety-eight West Muclo Road to be rezoned from residential two to residential one for single-family housing for a Monty Naples studentsman. They wanted me to let, you know, they did say they could be here tonight, but since they already have a favorable recommendation, I said I could take care of the meeting for them, so, but they wanted that on record. But all of this is, is that they'd like to rezon the front half of that property, not the back half, to be a planned unit development, so that they can have both a single-family housing, multi-family kind of duplex patio homes, and their business all in that same region. In your packet, you have kind of a map, and I just divided it in half to show you which part would be residential one, which part would be the planned unit development. They didn't have any strict stipulations with the planned unit development, so this is where we are now. It's basically just so they can have all different kinds of uses in that one, so. Do you guys have any questions? The existing structure there, it was a white barn, now it's like a gray black barn. It will be their business, it will be home to their business, their business storage. And they also have some ideas to have other businesses there as well.
And this passed with a nine-to-one favorable rating, right?
Yes, so passed the advisory plant commission, nine-to-one favorable vote. They did have some contingencies, but that should be taken care of whenever they submit their next plat.
What other questions do you have for Ms. Bolling?
I'll make a motion that be approved.
Bring them on. President Mans makes a motion to submit orders twenty-two dash nine, or on first reading. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Bill Hublin, second, any questions, comments?
I do, I guess, out of curiosity, is this project receiving infrastructure support from the city?
No, it just would not be a car. The car would be fifty, took it to fifty houses.
You require. So, what about Hidden Meadows?
Hidden Meadows was one that we paid for, that had got put into all those others. And I told, I told the developer that that litmus was fifty years. And so, I said, because it's got, it's a fusion, the city's paid for it.
I guess, I'm obviously okay with having a standard here, but going back and forth on this, as a developer, I would be very frustrated.
It wasn't drawing back and forth, it was basically.
Well, you just said that the test is fifty houses, two years, and Hidden Meadows is ten.
Hidden Meadows is actually about fifty, and this is an additional ten.
But that's not, additional ten.
As far as we just, we just paid for materials.
So, that's why, I guess I'm referring to is, obviously I had concerns about providing infrastructure in the first place, but now we're having developments like this, which is a great development, and one that I can serve as support. And if I'm in the developer's shoes, I'm asking the question of why? And that's what we brought up the first time, is if this is on a case-by-case situation, who ultimately decides who gets infrastructure and who doesn't?
And that's what's saying, if you ask me, I had to, maybe I should have thought a little bit more before I made that second. Is this where the city is putting the bill for the infrastructure instead of the contractor? Okay.
No, but that's the question I have, is how do we decide who gets infrastructure and who doesn't? Because if it's fifty homes, then Hidden Meadows is ten.
It's ten.
And they get infrastructure. But this is twelve.
That was due because the attorney was carrying, put that in several of them. And I kept telling them, this is, this is not going to fit.
You're referring to putting in the housing tip, which was removed from the housing tip. So, they shouldn't have received that infrastructure ever removed.
That was, I told them, that's the compromise we made.
That's the compromise you made?
Yes, exactly.
I just, just curious, because again, this is the issue that I knew we were going to run into by doing that. And now we're in a position where this development is correct, and I think it's what we need in the city, not that Hidden Meadows isn't, but if it's fifty, that's fine, let's have that standard, let's stick to that standard. But if it's, well, you have ten and you get it, but then this says twelve and you don't get it, it's.
That's what we did, that's exactly what we did. But again, this, this just got put into the wrong spot. It was told, and I said, it's not, this is the, so that's the compromise we made.
And I, I would want to agree with the Councilman Evans, that we need to have the fifty, whatever the standard is. I will also say that this, this development is outside the city limits. So, it's another thing, I did not, I don't think I'm in favor of doing out, county, what we're, I mean, they're within the two-mile range.
Yeah, and I'm not in favor of providing infrastructure.
Yeah, we've had this discussion, you and I, quite a bit.
Yeah, and that's just where we're going, is, you know, who controls what? And if I'm a developer looking for property in Scottsburg, do I, am I aware of that fifty-home requirement? Or do I think everybody gets the infrastructure? I mean, how, how is that perceived? Because, I mean.
Let me go through Scotts, and we tell them.
Who tells them?
I do.
So, you control who gets infrastructure and who doesn't?
Basically, yeah. Because that's something, that's why I'm asking, I'm asking for the developer, to be, if you're going to come here, for fifty homes, then you want it.
Okay, that's, that seems.
And the council wants to say, oh, you don't want to do that anymore. Stop housing, I mean, you can do it.
Well, not stop the housing, that's, that's not what we're referring to. We're talking about consistency, and it seems to be a lack thereof in all of these projects. What we're referring to is, this person gets infrastructure, this person doesn't.
No, that's not true.
Well, then you just, what did you just say, man?
I just, I just said that the Hidden Meadows two got put in by mistake.
But, but, but go back further than that, you said your test was fifty homes in two years.
That's exactly correct.
Hidden Meadows is ten homes, correct?
That's correct, and it kept in there, and so I went to Bud and Lindsay, said, it's not going to fit. And I said, because you've been put in there, I'm going to get compromised with you.
Are Hidden Meadows, is Hidden Meadows getting infrastructure support from the city of Scottsburg?
Yes, they do.
They're ten homes?
They're ten homes.
That's not fifty.
That's not fifty. It's supposed to put in eighty, and a little.
Yeah, but that's not.
So, this is not an individual who's not putting on this.
But that's eighty homes was before all of our time here. Or eighty homes was before all of our time when we were elected.
No, no. We, those eighty homes was.
You're talking about Beechwood?
Beechwood.
Okay, that's, that's a total separate, I'm talking about Hidden Meadows and this property.
You're right, but they also have charges in Hidden Meadows one, which was fifty homes. There's fifty homes over there, sure.
Well, like, all I, all I wanted to know is if I'm a developer that comes to the city looking for property to develop, you are the judge, the jury, and the executioner on what I get money from?
Well, I mean, that's, that's the league I have taken. And the judge and jury system, that's the fifty years, if you want infrastructure, you have to bring us fifty homes.
I just wanted to make that a little bit clearer, that, that is.
I guess the question I have, Terry, is if I'm a developer and I say, okay, I'm going to build fifty homes in two years, so I get the infrastructure, you allow that, and then I failed to deliver those fifty homes in two years, then what happens?
Yeah, I'm not going to put all that infrastructure.
All right, but if you put in infrastructure for thirty homes by that time, do they pay, do they go back in reverses for that? Or do they, I mean, you know, and I, I just, I've been on plant commissions and things like that for too long, where the developer will say, here's what it's going to look like, and then it never materializes.
And typically, what we've done is we've put a, we've put a stipulation with a timing there, and then we make the first apply.
So, so then they wouldn't reimburse us for that, I mean, if they fail to meet their obligation?
That's right.
Then they pay the infrastructure for the twenty-five homes, or?
But traditionally, the contractor puts the infrastructure in, gives it to the city at no cost. And so, we're paying for it to begin with, and then getting responsibility of it afterwards. So, we, it could be, what, a couple of ma, quarter of a million dollars or something like that, about so far that we're paying out. This may not pertain to that, but that's, I can't see paying for it. And then, when the contractor gives it to the city, to begin with, on, on development like that.
By getting it to us, because I mean, if we're putting it in.
Well, it's signed over to the city, but the city doesn't have any expense for the contractor to put that infrastructure in. So, if we've got two hundred thousand dollars wrapped up in that infrastructure, labor, and material, that's not fair to the taxpayer.
I guess I misunderstand, but I mean, what you're saying is, is a whole-time way of doing it?
You're exactly right, that's the way they did. It hasn't been done that way in the past. Whenever somebody is supposed to put in a subdivision, then it is signed over to the city for, for care. But then what we're doing, we're trying to incentivize people to come to Scottsburg. And to do that, we've been, we've been trying to woo the developers here to, to go forward and develop property. And that's what we've been doing.
But maybe there's, there's a difference between enticing and giving the entire thing. You talk about being the traditional way and the modern way. Can you name anywhere that provides every utility to a developer? Because I, I, I've never heard of. I've never heard in my life that every utility is provided to a developer. There's Suratap beesway, there's maybe some help with the water main extension?
We don't make Suratas.
I, I, I know, but what we do instead is we give them every single piece of infrastructure on a taxpayer's dime to put a subdivision, and you pick and choose which ones work and which ones don't?
We're not picking and choosing, we're just saying, if you're going to be a developer and build fifty houses plus, you know, that's, that's how you get the infrastructure. And you don't want to do that one for, you know, we can, we can cut that back, which one, but we have tried.
No, we just, I, I'm speaking for myself, it needs to be consistent, that's.
Oh, I am consistent.
If Hidden Meadows has ten homes and they've received an infrastructure help, Mary, you're not consistent. That, you can't say that you're consistent if one did not meet your litmus test, and you provide an infrastructure, and then this doesn't meet the litmus test either, and it doesn't get infrastructure. That's, again, that's just, and we're talking about recruiting and enticing folks, recruiting and enticing, I would, I would be looking for a community with consistency.
You know, I mean, we did have consistency, right?
Agreed, Mr.?
Yeah, there we go, thanks. So, where are we at now? We have a motion to approve the plant, the, the foot, and it was made by myself, seconded by Bill.
Correct.
Right, Bill?
Yeah.
Anything else? You hear, nothing else? Bring them on, please, say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights on. Good, Evans, okay. Does anybody want to go forward, anything else?
No.
Rick, do you agree?
I, I just noticed that this is written differently, as far as to get your own signature. When I looked at the ordinance, it's different from the, like Josh has done it in the last, in our ordinance since Josh has been our attorney. So, I don't know if that matters, so if you all, do I have to look at them?
I think we could wait, they're, they're still waiting on their plat, in my current firm.
Yeah, they're still waiting on their plat, and that, Mr. Kraft provided that ordinance. He wrote it for the studentsmen, and he's their attorney, so that's why it's a little different.
Look, it's not going to hold them up. Hey, Congressman, notice one thing on here. I got six eighty-eight in Monroe, and then six ninety-eight in Monroe.
Is it on both the, are both addresses on the ordinance? It's six ninety is correct.
Yeah, the ordinance is sixty-nine is.
Six ninety-eight is what is correct.
Okay. And then the recommendation has six eighty-eight, the ordinance. Yeah, the ordinance is correct, so that's the only one that matters.
Yeah, the original property before it was subdivided, I think, was sixty-eight. So, I'm pretty sure why it was described as that.
Yeah.
So, if we waited to do this in June, Josh could rewrite the ordinance, is that what we're saying? Just go ahead and have Josh do it? That would be my preference, have our attorney write it.
I apologize, I did not, I'm just going to rant a little bit.
I don't know how you guys feel.
As long as, as long as the developer, that's fine.
Well, I mean, if he has plat already approved and was ready to break ground, I'd.
If it's at your first June meeting, they wouldn't receive plat approval until the week following, so you should be okay.
Actually, we've got to pass our first review, we're running out of the next way of approval. It gives them compliance, state, and benefits, and I think that's Jan Ward.
Yes, this is just the formality that the businesses who have received tax abatements, this is what they must present to us every year to show they are in compliance and that they are doing what they had told us originally. And Josh has reviewed it, reasons, and said to put them on our agenda. So, I would ask, who the first one, which is HIPAA?
This is the Scottsburg Solar Array LLC, this is HIPAA. Again, Scottsburg has no investment in this, this is totally a HIPAA property. They were built, paid for, installed this, sold the credits. What they're getting in here, I believe, is a, is a tax abatement for a period of time, so this is going forward there. So, we would, I guess, accept the motion to approve the HIPAA compliance with statements of benefits.
I'll wait for the motion.
Are those the next motions, or second?
I'll say.
Chris Albertson, second, anything else? Bring them on, please, say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights on. Good, Evans?
Thank you very much.
Next thing is the approval of the same tech compliance with state and benefits. That's the next one in your packet, can you, anything else to say on that?
No, that is pretty much the same, same thing, and this started in two thousand fourteen, so it looks like we're seven or eight years into it.
So, that's usually a ten-year compliance.
It's a, yes.
Ten years, so. So, next one then would be the same tech place, or motion to accept this same tech compliance statement of benefits?
Motion.
Chris Albertson makes the motion, is her second.
I'll say.
Christian Evans, second, any questions, comments, concerns? Bring them on, please, say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights on. Good, Evans, thank you very much. Last one we have is approval of a reasonable.
That was the same one.
Four days, sorry. Okay, what else do we have for the seat? Announcements? Mr. President?
Good.
We had, Jan and I were at the, we have a monthly meeting with the contractor of the sewer plant, with the engineers in the sewer plant, and we can tell you that basically, we're probably into our second week for the sewer plant. for the sewer plant is basically a monopoly. So the new sewer plant is full, we're taking, the lift station is pumping in to our three reactors, and going through the headworks, everything else like this, so it's been a great, great thing. Basically a year, thirteen months, and we're up and going. We're not through with everything, there are a few subtle things that have been put on, and probably June, July, we'll be up and going. We'd like to have maybe an open house for everybody to come out, do a walk-through of everything, we're so proud of this. And we had a massive rainstorm during the peak of time, we went over there, and it wasn't even, I mean, it was just like a trickle going in that plant, it was just so amazing. So, so we're very, very pleased with everything going on there. So, just to give you an update on the sewer plant there. Also, the parking lot, the parking lot was paved, and it was just striped, when did they strip that lot?
They stripped that Friday.
Friday, okay. So, and I believe the county employees are using that now as well, so.
They got thirty-seven spaces in there.
Thirty-seven.
And it really does make a difference.
Correct. The city's put lights up, we're looking to, and they've got permission from one of the owners there to possibly paint some of those walls, and to make it lit lights, and we've got a great event planned to go up in front of that, so people can still walk through those green events, you know, so it won't be totally blocked off. So just like, that is all, that's true, but very nice for our downtown area. So, anything else for the seat?
I would like to make counsel aware that Tish and I have started our discussion on budget. Can you believe it's around the corner again? So hopefully, either, I don't know that I'll get it this week, but after the first week of June, I will send you a, like a timetable on what we're looking at for July.
And I don't know, counsel, do we want to meet in front of the head again?
I, I think it's good practice.
And that's, that's what we were thinking, and that we would, oh, so you might look at your calendar to see, like, we're looking at the week of July, the eleventh, to possibly, see if they're going to be gone that week. You're going to, that's, you always be traveling too much. Well, then I would say let's look at the week after that, or you just want to be gone a week?
I, I think we don't too, that's okay.
Oh, gosh, okay, that's going to be personal. Okay, I'll be in touch with you, since you're the president, and we'll do our best to get, get something worked out. If we have to meet with him, we, to make an idea of what we're, yeah. Okay.
Anything else for the seat? Mary, I think the, I've noticed the other day that the start of the flower arrangements around the square, it's really starting to look nice. Amen, amen. It's always, always good to see the color. We have a young lady who's started that a couple of years ago, and I said, let me see your hand. She said, say what? I said, we see your hand. So she shows me her hand, and I said, you know, look at that thumb, it's not green. But I say, I dare say that if you pay attention to Mr. Asher, by the time you're finished here, that thumb will be green. She has developed a beautiful green thumb, so she does a lot of.
Does great.
And I, and I, you know what else I like is the graduate banners. So, and this week is graduation, so good luck to all our graduates.
Amen to that. And I'll tell you what, I think, I've heard so many compliments about the banners, and the kids are so proud to see their name up there. It's, it's nice to see her name around the square. And we want to, you know, bless our children as they go, and hope they come back. I say, moving out educated, they come home. Anything else for the seat? We have a motion to. Thank you very much.